It is now seven o'clock and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
All councilors are present.
Can we please stand and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move forward with the agenda, I want you to know that I've removed from, removed item 12B from the agenda as we are not yet ready to proceed.
So under special orders of the day and announcements, 3A is introducing newly hired and promoted employees.
At this time, we'll have our city manager introduce department heads, who will then introduce our new employees.
Thank you. We have a number of new employees who are here this evening. I will first ask our interim fire chief to please come forward and introduce his new staff.
We actually have two new hires. One of the new hires couldn't make it here because of the weather. But here we have Casey Ballard. He comes from us, from the town of Beloit. He started there in 2012 as a part-time firefighter. He was then hired full-time on August of 2015. During his time at that fire department, Casey has become a state-certified firefighter one, a firefighter two, a driver operator, and a fire officer. Casey also obtained his EMT paramedic license in 2015. So he's a plug-and-play employee, which is really nice. So last month, Casey completed a three-week academy with the Beloit Fire Department in which we tested him on all his skills to make sure the certifications matched his skill level. And he passed with flying colors.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Our other firefighter that is not here is Ian Johnson. Ian started his career with the Milton Fire Department. Doesn't look anything like Casey. Ian was a part-time firefighter with Edgerton Fire Protection District. He also gained his state certifications while working at that department in his firefighter one, firefighter two, and driver operator. And he also obtained his EMT license in 2015. And we're happy to have both of them onboard.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome to our team.
Chief Zabalski, would you like to come forward and introduce your new officers?
Good evening, councilors. I'd like to introduce the three newest officers in our department. Myeli Muniz, Dylan Hagstrom, and Alexander Lindberg. All three of these folks are onboarding this week with our department and they'll start the academy on February 24th for an 18 weeks of exciting and intensive study work. And then they'll be out on field training, but we're excited to have all three of them. They're really quality candidates and we're just kind of excited to get them in the academy, get them out on the street and into the community.
Welcome. Welcome.
Now I would like to introduce our Public Works Director, Laura Williamson. And she will be introducing our new Director of Operations.
Good evening, counselor. And I am very excited to be introducing John Kirksey. He is our Director of Operations. He is here from the Dallas, Texas area. So we're very excited to have John. He's been with us for a couple of weeks now. He's quickly learning about the cold weather and the snow. But John comes with quite an extensive background. He has worked both in the private and the public sector. He has worked for the city of Sherman in Texas, as well as for a number of contracting companies and actually did a stint in Afghanistan with a contractor doing some work out there with our military. So very excited to have John onboard. He's been hitting the ground running. And then I also have another new candidate. Tyler was not able to join us this evening, Tyler Capel. He is our grounds maintenance operator. And Tyler has really hit the ground running. You know, Sooner was here. We were able to have him get licensed with the CDL and he has been helping us with our snow removals. So a lot of exciting things happening in Public Works. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome, John.
Under item 3B, we have a proclamation honoring Beloit International Film Festival on its 15th season.
Anna Kelly and other representatives from BIF will receive the proclamation.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas from February 21st to March 1st, 2020, the Beloit International Film Festival, or BIF, will celebrate its 15th season of attracting an international audience to Beloit to present and to view outstanding new independent films. And whereas, BIF will mark its anniversary with festivities and entertainment designed to draw the greater Beloit community together and to acknowledge the contributions of donors and volunteers over a decade and a half. And whereas, hundreds of volunteers come forward each year to help transport, house, entertain, and welcome thousands of visitors of all ages to our community, making a significant economic impact on Beloit while celebrating its downtown. And whereas, Beloit is proud to welcome one of its favorite daughters, Stephanie Klett, back as BIF 2020 honorary chair. And whereas, this annual event, which has been the talk of film festivals around the world for years, is production of an outstanding volunteer board led by Anna Kelly and the singular talented executive director Greg Gerard."
Slow down during those parts.
They're very distracting. And whereas, BIF is made possible each year by supporters and donors of local institutions and businesses, by individual members of the Beloit Film Society and the founders, as well as local and state foundations, the Wisconsin Arts Board, and funds from the state of Wisconsin and the National Endowment for the Arts. Now therefore, the Beloit City Council honors and celebrates BIF 2020 and welcomes filmmakers and audiences to our community. We thank the hundreds of volunteers for helping to bring Beloit to the world and the world to Beloit through the power of film. Furthermore, the Beloit City Council urges residents to enjoy the films and activities and extend a warm welcome to the filmmakers and visitors to BIF 2020, presented the 17th day of February, 2020."
Thank you, esteemed panel of judges. We want to invite all of you. There's still our tickets left for our Thursday night event. It's a brand-new event called Festiv and we think it's going to be a great party. So get your tickets, get ahold of me. I can maybe get you a comp if that would work. Oh no, I guess not. Another proclamation over here. Okay, anyway, thank you so much for this wonderful proclamation. And I just can't believe we made it 15 years. Looking forward to a great 10 days of BIF. If we don't see you Thursday, we'll see you Friday. Let's get together in BIF, okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we can't wait to come out and see all the activities and things that will be going on.
Item 3C is a proclamation recognizing February as Children's Dental Health Month.
Okay. Next, the CEO, Mary Beth Johnson, dental assistant Sonia Angula, and Anna Montoya, clinic communication specialists are here to accept the proclamation. So can you all come forward, please? And then we have a little one. Who is that? Oh, is she? Okay. We're going to start her early.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas, the year of 2020 marks the 75th anniversary of the community water for days..." For I can't read today, I'm sorry. And whereas, the slogan for the 2020 National Children's Dental Health Month is fluoride in water prevents cavities, get it from the tap. And whereas, since 1949, the American Dental Association has sponsored the National Children's Dental Health Month as an opportunity to spread awareness about the importance of oral health from an early age. And whereas, developing habits of good dental hygiene at an early age, as well as scheduling yearly dental visits, helps children get a good start on a lifetime of healthy teeth and gums. And whereas, the future is, to a large measure, dependent on the good health of our families and good health can be achieved in part through good dental habits learned early and reinforced throughout life. And whereas, safeguarding the health of our children is critical to the well-being of our city and state. And whereas, Community Health Systems, Inc. is engaged in promoting oral health for all through a comprehensive, patient-centered approach. And whereas, children are the future and we owe it to ourselves to make oral health a priority. Therefore, the Beloit City Council proclaims the month of February as Children Dental Health Month and encourages, urges our parents to take special care to teach their children the importance of dental health care, presented the 17th day of February, 2020."
Mary Beth, would you like to make a comment?
Just say thank you for supporting us and our comprehensive care for the community. We're here to support your medical, dental, and behavioral health needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Mary Beth, for what your agency is doing for our community. Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
There are no public hearings this evening, so item five is public comment.
We have reached the point on the agenda for residents to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but may refer speakers to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a privilege and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form and turn it in prior to our meeting. Each individual will be invited to the podium and asked to state your name and address for the record. And our, do we have a signing list? Okay. So are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anna Kelly. I'm at 1747 Sherwood Drive. And I'm here to talk to you about the new parking regulations over on Third Street. So I said, we sent out a packet and we took a petition and because people were not aware what was going on. So it turns out we've taken the parking out on the east side of Third Street. But the problem is not the fact that there's no parking, because I get dropped off anyway. It's the fact that the only way to cross the street over there is you have to cross the street, walk on the street to go to the parking lot. So there's no crosswalks, there's no way to get around. So I think taking out the parking was kind of like a, like this, oh well, what are we going to do? You know, there's traffic to take out the parking. And it's not making that any safer. Just because drivers can see people, that doesn't mean they're going to go any slower. They're going to go faster. Because now they don't have to worry about being parked in the street. Parking's a problem there. And besides that, making it wider, you're making cars go faster. So I just wanted to bring that up. And even if the parking's gone, I want to know if there are any plans for crosswalks or any other ways to make pedestrians safer instead of just removing parking. Seems like I need your reaction to the proposal. So that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council this evening? If there are no other public comments, we'll go on to item six, the consent agenda.
All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member shall request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. As a point of information, the items 6C, D, and E that are referred to Plan Commission for February 19th will actually be taken up on March 4th at their next regular meeting.
Would any councilor like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to remove item 6G from the consent agenda.
Okay. The consent agenda consists of items 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D, 6E, 6F, and 6H. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Okay, it was a first move by Council Forbeck, seconded by Councilor Jacobson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6G is consideration of Resolution 2020-038, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milwaukee and the city of Beloit to provide law enforcement services, personnel, and equipment during the 2020 Democratic National Convention.
Is there a motion to approve item 6G? Moved by Council Prushil. Is there a second? Okay, so with that said, we'll go ahead and have a report from Chief Zabalski.
Thank you, President Duncan. This agreement would allow us to send eight Beloit Police Department members specially trained to assist the Milwaukee Police Department and the United States Secret Service with this national special security event, the Democratic National Convention, which is being held in Milwaukee July 13th through the 16th. We will be reimbursed for, obviously, their time, food, lodging, et cetera. And it's a commitment that is being made by a vast number of law enforcement agencies across the state and the region. It's very common in these situations with this large type of a venue for an agency to request mutual aid to assist with the public safety aspects. Also, in doing so, we have ensured that we have adequate staff here at Beloit to make sure that we are not short-staffed as a result and that we'll have adequate officers on the street as well.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions from councilors?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Councilor Levy.
The first thing that I would have is related to the cost. Let's, I see where they're applying for a grant. What, in the event that they do not receive the grant, will we still be sending officers? And will there be a cost to the city? I just happened to remember years ago when we had something like this in Beloit and I think we got stuck holding the bill for an event like this. So I want to make sure that the city, if we send officers, will be reimbursed.
If we send officers, we will be reimbursed. If the city of Milwaukee does not get the grant, then we're not obligated to send members.
And so we will know ahead of time if they receive the grant or not before we send our individuals.
Yeah, the city of Milwaukee anticipates getting the grant very soon or the approval for the grant, they said, early 2020. So I'm imagining we'll have word from them very shortly.
Okay. And then something just minor and I think it's, I'm glad we pulled it off to kind of answer some of the questions that you've already addressed, but this in no way indicates one way or another the city's political views just because we're going to the Democratic National Convention. One cannot say that, well, the city is supporting, you know, that party because we're assisting. So I want to also make sure that we're always being clear. So the cost is one. And then you may have individuals who think that just because we're sending officers, because I would hope that you would do this for any convention that we ask for help with, and I'm sure you would, but...
Sure. Absolutely. And it's just like when we have various politicians who campaign in our city and in our region. We oftentimes request mutual aid and join up as a team to ensure public safety. That's our main goal. When I was with Milwaukee in charge of their major incident response team, we sent Milwaukee Police members to Pittsburgh for their convention, to St. Paul for that convention. So it's very common. Law enforcement is really just there to ensure public safety, not to endorse a particular candidate or party.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion from any councilors? Go ahead, Council Prushil.
I just want to make sure that something doesn't come up that we're, the sheriff's department's already shorthanded because they've sent some people and other people, you know, in our immediate areas have sent some people. And all of a sudden, we've got two guys out because of, you know, illness or, you know, how are we ensuring that we're not going to find ourselves in a bind? That's all.
Yeah, we have collaborated with the sheriff's office and Jamesville PD, which is part of our regional consortium of mobile field force personnel. And those are the types of people that we're sending. We have adequate staff to send this amount of officers and they are sending an amount of officers as well. And then we collaboratively have sufficient staffing resources to ensure public safety here in Beloit and in our region.
It's good to know that we're well-staffed. Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other further discussion and questions from any councilors? Okay. Go ahead, Council Jacobson.
Chief, if we send officers and it puts them into overtime, I see on this form, I recognize it as a federal form. And it says that, you know, we cover Medicare, FICA. It covers all of the insurance and things. But what happens if it puts an officer into overtime?
They'll get paid for their time worked at the rate. Because that's still FLSA. So they will get paid for that overtime work that'll be reimbursed.
Okay. And will be reimbursed at their higher rate.
All time worked, yeah, will be reimbursed.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any further discussion and questions from councilors? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 7A is consideration of Resolution 2020-034 for the approval and denial of applicants for an alcohol beverage operators and bartenders license for the years 2019 through 2021. You have before you this evening four recommendations for approval, one recommendation for denial, and the timeframe for that denial to appeal has passed.
Is there a motion to approve item 7A? Moved by Council Prushil. Is there a second? Second by Council Forbeck. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
There are no ordinances this evening, so moving on to appointments. There are two and they will be taken by one motion unless you want to take them off. And so this evening, we have to the Community Development Authority, Robert Douglas Jr., replacing Jay Murray to a term ending December 31st, 2023. And the Traffic Review Committee, Celestino Ruffini, replacing M. Ramsden for a term ending December 30th, 2021.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the appointments, please? Moved by Council Forbeck? Is there a second? Second by Councilor Blakely. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10 is councilor activities and upcoming events.
We will begin with Councilor Prushil.
First of all, let me say that many people may already realize it, but I attended the Powerhouse Open House Tour and I intentionally waited until that opening so I didn't have any preconceptions of what it was going to be like inside. And it was truly a remarkable experience, stunning. The scale of it blew me away. And when it was all over with, I got some great pictures. I shared them and other people will probably see them elsewhere. But I got to go back and get some more. And the thing that struck me was, and nobody's going to understand this, but I went to the House on the Rock in 1964 as a nine-year-old or eight-year-old kid and it was still a house. And it was just open for the public to go through, you know, as a tour. It wasn't a tourist trap and it wasn't all glitzy. It was just a house on a rock. And I remember that experience well. I remember the feeling it gave me. And this gave me that same feeling. It's only, I never expected it. I was just astonished walking through there. And I realized what it was I was feeling. I was feeling eight-year-old Mark. And that was just a wonderful experience. And this weekend, during my photo walk yesterday, apparently the college was having its open house and taking tours, people around, you know, prospective students around. And I overheard conversations and they all talked about the powerhouse. And I'm out there in the yard and outside, you know, on the campus. And I'm hearing people talk about, you know, going to the powers, getting the powers, all this cool stuff. It clearly is having an impact on the perceptions of their visitors. And it was just a stunning experience. Hopefully down the road, we'll see more and more access to it. And I know Lori's going to say something later, so... But I just had to, I just had to share that. I just, it was just an amazing experience. And one more thing, I'm not done talking. This Thursday is the monthly weather tech at Grinnell Hall. And we'll have, hopefully a few people show up and the weather's good. And we've got, we had like 10 people there last month. So this is a pretty popular thing. People come in and we answer their tech questions, try and find answers for them. And please, don't anybody bring me a Chromebook wanting to hook up to your printer. Please don't do that to me again. Anyway, it's a very interesting experience, lots of phones, flip phones even. And yeah, we'll help you find answers to your problems. And I've been doing it for almost four years now. So anyway, that's all for now.
Thank you, Council Prushil. And I'm sure you took a lot of photos. Council Jacobson. Council Blakely.
I just want to remind Beloit citizens to be sure and vote tomorrow. It's a good warm-up to this big year of various elections. But the vote tomorrow is just about Wisconsin State Supreme Court members. We'll be near, I'm sorry? It went off again. It doesn't want to do what it's supposed to.
Okay.
Okay, unlike me, I guess. Anyway, so vote tomorrow. It won't take you much time. And because a smaller turnout is expected, there are only two polling places in the city of Beloit tomorrow. Wards 1 through 12 vote over at Beloit Historical Society on Hackett. And wards 13 through 25 vote at Central Christian Church on Milwaukee Road. And I was just saying, it's simply a vote to narrow down people running for the state Supreme Court. Two people on the ballot tomorrow and then in April, and one of them will go on against the other judge who's on the ballot in April. So start the year off right and vote.
Thank you, Council Blakely. Council Levy. Council Forbeck.
Yes, I just want to encourage people to attend BIF. Just a comment, there's something really called stretch viewing. And it's awfully nice that we in our own city can go to some movies or some short movies, something that you would never choose to go to, you know, if you were just going to go to the movie theater. And I think it's all good for all of us as a community to have a little bit of that stretch viewing. It's good for the soul and the mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Forbeck. Vice President Anderson.
Yes, I want to echo what everybody said about going to BIF and voting. That's all really great stuff. And, you know, we have a lot of elections this year, so it's a good time to get a practice run. I myself will be doing it the first time as a West Sider. So definitely nervous about that, but also excited. And Kevin usually is the one that does this, but I'm going to embarrass Lori Stotler today. She was recently named one of the YWCA's Women of Distinction. So that is a great honor and, you know, it's well-deserved. So if we can give her a round of... I'm sure she really appreciates that. So I'll wrap up my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President, Vice President Anderson. I haven't attended many events this last, these last couple of weeks because I've been on vacation. However, I want to begin by acknowledging February as Black History Month. As our previous, at our previous council meeting, our council gave proclamations to Alicia Wash and Audrey Vaughn for their programs at Aldridge and McNeil Schools. I want to applaud them for educating our students about the achievements of African-American women and men throughout history and today. Let's continue their efforts, not only in February, but throughout the entire year. That said, I want to thank Linda Hickman-Fair, who is the academic advisor at Black Hawk Technical College for her many history lessons on diversity in Beloit, which she has shared on PBS and on her Facebook page, recognizing our local black heroes, which have included Michelle Hendricks-Nora, Tiffany Henry, Tiara Purifoy, Florence Haley, and Dr. marijuana Pepsi Van Dyke, just to name a few. So thank you, Linda, and everyone who works hard every day to enhance and appreciate inclusivity. Speaking of people who are making a difference in our community, I want to again apply and congratulate Lori Stotler, our city clerk treasurer, who will be honored with the 2020 Women of Distinction Award from the YWCA of Rock County. Way to go, Lori. And I want to thank Sarah Malloy, Director of Strategic Communications, and Pam Lath, our executive assistant, for updating the Beloit report. It looks great. So thank you. We have wonderful people on our team. And if you are interested in joining in, you can feel free to put your talent and skills to good use by volunteering. We have many vacancies on our city committees, on our Alcohol Beverage and License Control Committee. There's one vacancy for a resident, one vacancy for Tavern League representative. We have a Board of Appeals. There's three vacancies for residents. Board of Review, there's one vacancy for a resident member and two for alternates. Community Development Authority, there's one vacancy for a resident. Our Landmarks Commission, there's three vacancies for residents. Then we have our Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Advisory Commission. There's one vacancy for a school district representative. And then the Traffic Review Committee, there's one vacancy for a resident. So there are many committees that you can serve on if you want to put your talent to good use. And if you need more information, you can feel free to call Pam Lath, who's our executive assistant. The number is 608-364-6614. Also, there will be a public involvement meeting for the Cranston Road Corridor Study on tomorrow, February 18th, from 5:00 to 6:00 at the City of Beloit Public Works Department, 2400 Spring Court. And we're having a spring primary election as Councilor Blakely... 2400 Springwood Court, and we're having a spring primary election, as Councilor Blakely discussed, in Beloit. So please remember that our polling places have been combined. So wards 1 through 12 will vote at the Beloit Historical Society, 2460 Milwaukee Road. So, and then, wait, there's one. Wards, I'm sorry, wards 1 through 12 will vote at the Beloit Historical Society, 845 Hackett Street, and wards 13 through 25 will vote at Central Christian Church. And if you have any questions, you can call our City Clerk's Office at 608-364-6680. I kind of jumbled that. So again, if you did not get the correct information, just call 608-364-6680. And don't forget that we have BIF coming up from February 21st through March 1st, so we'll have lots of fun activities coming up. Lastly, I want to congratulate our new Beloit police officers that were recently sworn in, Mayella Muniz, Dylan Hexstrom, and Alexander Limberg, and also our firefighters, which we met tonight. And I want you to thank our Department of Public Works for working to keep our streets shovel. It's really icy outside, so please, everyone, slow down and drive safely. Next, item 11.
The City Manager Presentation. City Manager Luther has an announcement before our annual report.
City Manager Luther.
Thank you. I am so proud to announce that the Powerhouse Riverwalk Project is fully funded. The generosity of our local business community, namely Beloit 200, and others who have asked to remain anonymous, at least for the time being, really came to support the city in this project. At our last city council meeting, we still had a sizable gap, but through these partnerships and a yet-to-be-awarded-but-officially-accepted WEDC grant application in the amount of $250,000, we were able to proceed, and the bid has been awarded and will be under construction soon.
Good job, Lori.
Good job, Lori. I just want to say thank you, because it takes a, let's give Lori a hand. Thank you, Lori, because that was not an easy task, but you made it happen, so thank you, we really appreciate all your efforts. Okay.
Under item 11A, we have a presentation of the Landmarks Commission Annual Report of the 2019 Historic Preservation Activities.
Good evening, I'm Alex Blazer with the Annual Report of the Beloit Landmarks Commission, which is required under...
Sit on. Did you, there you go.
Yeah, I got it. I still have a flip phone, you know, so...
What are you going to do? Nothing wrong with that.
All right. Okay, this annual report is required by the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which we present every, every year. Right now, the Landmarks Commission consists of four commissioners, myself, Joy Beckman, Chris Gallagher, and Steve Truesdale. Our city representative is Sherri Blakely, and, and our staff liaison is Hillary Rotman. Right now, as has been mentioned, we are short three commissioners, which at the present time, it's hard to get a quorum with four commissioners. So you may not be interested in this, but you may know somebody who is, so pass the word. Other than the other announcements of all the benefits of being on a commission, I'd like to add that it looks good on a resume. Who knows? You might want to be president someday. The Beloit Landmarks Commission issues certificates of appropriateness for anything, alterations in historical homes that, or landmarks, for outside alterations, meaning people can do things on the inside, not necessarily needing a COA, but for outside alterations. Our historical districts is Bluff Street District, College Park District, and Merrill Street District. We also have 46 individual-listed landmarks, which totals our 321 properties that we oversee. The things that are listed here are the different things that we have to have COAs for. Some of them can be staff-approved, and some of them have to come before the commission based on, like, there are particular things like fences and things that can be approved by the staff, which Hillary takes care of that. And this last year, these are the list of the things that we've approved, and 15 of 33 projects were approved by staff. And in additional things that are going on with the Landmarks Commission or in the historical district is the new historical district listed, the Milwaukee Road and Emerson Residential Historic District, which includes 150 homes. At present time, these homes do not require a COA, but they are in the new historic district. I don't exactly know how that progresses, but if there's question, this is a bird's-eye view of that new area. And if you were a bird, I don't think all those lines would be in your eyes, but if you're familiar with this area, this, you know, is where, where this is. In addition, this, I think it was mentioned, the Grinnell Hall Project is a really big thing. I live close to here, so I go by there every once in a while, see how it's coming along. The Turtle Creek Master Plan over by the bathhouse has come along, we're in the first. I do like this new big podium here, the other one seems so low that I haven't dug into it. I need a big podium, because, well, because I'm a big guy. And then the Angel Museum is also being added on too, which is a, I haven't been by there lately, but I don't know how it's coming along, but it's, would be good to, you know, see. And with that, what questions would you have?
Any questions, comments from councilors? Go ahead, Counselor Blakely.
Hi, Alex. I'll see you tomorrow evening for the meeting too, so we should have a quorum.
All right, bring friend.
I'm trying to spread the word. But it's a pleasure to serve on the Landmarks Commission. Beloit has many beautiful places in it, Beloit has many beautiful old places in it, and it's been really revealing, revealing to me, or a surprise somewhat to see, to have the people come to the meetings, you know, to go over things and find out exactly what they need to do to follow the guidelines. And in this past year, there was at least one case where a family in a historic home needed to put in a wheelchair ramp, and we worked with them to get that figured out so they would be in accord and still be able to simplify things at home. And in another situation, there were people from a historic old Beloit church who came in with their list of what needed doing and their plans for doing it, and made sure they got all the required okays. But you get to learn a lot more about the history of Beloit on Landmarks Commission, and you get to hear the captain of our team making jokes now and then. So it's worthwhile. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And in addition to the comment about the ramps, and I said some things can be approved by staff, well, we are going through a process of getting the ramps approved by staff. I mean, you need a ramp, you need a ramp. It's, and what can be wrong with ramp, you know? I mean, they're not going to be all that historical, but they're necessary. So we're trying to make things as easy as it can be for the people who are in need, so...
That's wonderful that you're doing it. Thank you, Mr. Blazer.
All right, thank you.
Item 12A is consideration of Resolution 2020-035, providing for the sale of approximately $2,235,000 for water system revenue refunding bond series 2020C.
We now have a report from our Finance and Administrative Services Director, Eric Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So a couple of weeks ago, we were here discussing some initial resolutions regarding the general obligation notes and bonds that will be funding the majority of our capital improvement program. So tonight, we have different types of initial resolutions. These are initial resolutions for some water refunding bonds. These are revenue bonds, and these are simply going to replace some existing bonds at a lower interest rate to save the water utility some significant money. So with us tonight is Greg Johnson from Ellers, and he will walk through the presale report.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, you have a copy of the presale report that goes through the bond issue that's related to the initial resolutions on your agenda this evening. As Eric mentioned, the sole purpose of this bond issue is to refund some existing debt to take advantage of lower interest rates that are presently available in the market. So the existing bonds that we're refunding were originally issued back in 2009. They're water system revenue bonds, where the legal pledge to repay the debt service is revenues of the water utility. These proposed refunding bonds will keep that revenue pledge in place. The debt service will be repaid by revenues of the water utility, but the debt service payments are projected to be lower than the remaining payments on the existing bonds. So the estimated savings from this refunding over a nine-year period is estimated at $410,768. The annual savings to the water utility each year will range between $40,000 and $50,000 per year. So no new money is included within this bond issue, it's really just to refund those outstanding obligations and take advantage of current interest rate conditions. We'll be conducting the sale on the same timeline as the general obligation financings for the city's 2020 capital projects. So we'll be conducting the sale on March 16th. We'll be back before the council that evening with award resolutions and the final sale results for the two general obligation financings that were awarded, authorized previously by the council, and then we'll be present to present these final results for the water system revenue refunding bonds as well, to present the final savings. So again, the action that's before you this evening is the initial resolution, which really starts the process, gives us authority to proceed with the sale of the revenue obligations. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the objectives of the financing plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Moved by Council Pruschel, seconded by Councilor Jacobson, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation. Next, we'll move on for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, moved by Council Pruschel, seconded by Councilor Jacobson, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now adjourned.